I will call the July 17th meeting of the Common Council to order. And first item is roll call.
Sullivan and Olson look absent. Burke?
Here.
Kewton?
Here.
Ramsey?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
Teal?
Present.
The first item is comments from citizens present, and they're limited to three minutes per speaker. And the first person on the list is Abby Atun, and Stacy Reese will be next.
Hello. I'm Abby Atun, Director of Community Development for the city, and I also staff the city's Sustainability Committee. And I'm here tonight to support the Sustainability Committee's recommendation for a 100% commitment to renewable energy for the city of Middleton and for the community as a whole. The Sustainability Committee has been working on this resolution for the past seven months in concert with the Sierra Club 350.org and the UW Cooperative Extension. Also, Middleton has a seat at the Dane County Council on Climate Change and has been working with the Municipalities Group on this resolution. And that group includes the city of Madison, city of Sun Prairie, Manona, and Fitchburg. And I know at least Manona and Fitchburg, I saw some representatives here tonight from those communities as well. Madison has already passed a 100% renewable resolution, and they are working on an energy plan for accomplishing their goals. Eau Claire, Wisconsin, is the other Wisconsin city that has passed a resolution. And we also work quite closely with Eau Claire on sustainability issues through the Green Tier Legacy Communities Group. Our city has a strong environmental ethic and a deep commitment to sustainability. As you know, in the fall of 2016, residents voted with 80.6% support for an advisory referendum stating that residents agreed that Middleton, as a local sustainability leader, has a responsibility to mitigate the risks of global warming through its policy decisions and actions. This resolution that is before you tonight will put Middleton on the path toward becoming a leader in mitigating the risks of global warming at a local level. As the famous architect and urban planner Daniel Burnham said, "Make no little plans. They have no magic to stir men's blood and probably themselves will not be realized." I think what Burnham meant is that they have no magic to stir men's and women's blood, but I really liked the quote, so I wanted to use it anyway. So, supporting this resolution tonight will set Middleton on a path toward a big plan which sets ambitious yet achievable targets and guidelines for energy use reduction and renewable energy generation. I also wanted to take this opportunity tonight to introduce Stacy Reese, the city's Sustainability Coordinator, without whom the work on this resolution would not have been possible. Stacy has been with the city now for just over two months, and in that short amount of time, she has accomplished a great deal. She is working in conjunction with four other Dane County municipalities to apply for over $300,000 in grant funding to develop a comprehensive energy plan with actionable strategies for achieving energy goals for the city. She has also uploaded all of the city's utility meters into Energy Star Portfolio Manager, which is no small task. It's been something that's been on our to-do list for more years than I'd like to admit. And it is a tool that can help the city measure and track energy and water consumption, which can be used to benchmark performance. So, for anyone who's interested in learning more about that, Stacy knows a great deal about it, and we now are able to compare our municipal buildings with other similar buildings across the country normalized for weather data to find out how they're performing. Stacy's been working on all sorts of projects related to energy use and resiliency, transportation, recycling, and a whole host of other sustainability topics, and I wanted this to be her official welcome from the city council. Stacy would like to speak as well.
Welcome, Stacy.
Thank you. Thank you, Abby, for the introduction, and thank you to the council for having me here tonight, especially for those who I haven't met yet. So, again, I'm Stacy Reese, the new Sustainability Coordinator for the city of Middleton. And I'm here to support the Sustainability Committee's recommendation to achieve 100% renewable energy for the city of Middleton and the community as a whole. A report published earlier this month from the National Surveys on Energy and the Environment found that 73% of Americans now think that there is solid evidence for global warming. This survey is the fifth straight survey in which at least 70% of Americans thought that there is evidence that temperatures on this planet are rising, which is supported by climate data. This recent survey, combined with the over 80% of Middleton residents who voted for mitigating the risks of global warming through policy in the 2016 referendum, speaks volumes to current public opinion on needing to take action. And the resolution put forth this evening is a reflection of those voices. As Abby mentioned, the local region is working together to move us forward on goals around renewable energy. There's never been as much urgency and support as now to take bold steps towards mitigating climate change. And local action around sustainability is where Middleton has and continues to be a leader. So, let's continue this leadership as a community together by setting the bold goals for achieving 100% renewable energy for Middleton. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next is Robert Oua. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. And could you state your residence or address?
Yes, my name is Robert Owen. My address is 1311 Middleton Street in Middleton. And I'm here to speak in appreciation of the efforts of Abby and Stacy and the Sustainability Committee, which has been working hard on this issue for a number of months. Really impressed with the work of the citizen volunteers on that committee. But I'm here also to speak in support of the fossil fuel resolution. Middleton has been a leader in responding to climate change in the last 10 years with its two resounding yes votes on the November 2016 referendum ballot being particularly noteworthy. Tonight's resolution builds on the referendum results from 2016. And considering this resolution, it's important to bear in mind that clean energy doesn't cost more any longer. It costs less. Wind energy at utility scale is now the lowest-cost energy source in our region. Wind energy will remain less costly than fossil fuel going forward over the next few decades. In fact, it will remain less costly forever. Solar energy at utility scale is now competitive with the cost of fossil-fuel sourced energy, and solar energy will decline further in costs over the next 10 years. Solar energy will become substantially cheaper over the next two decades. Battery storage will also become substantially cheaper over the next two decades. The bottom line is really simple. Converting fully to clean energy in city operations by 2035 or so, and in the community as a whole by 2040 or so, will not cost more, it will save money. Mitigating climate change by carrying out the voter's mandate from November 2016 is the smart thing to do. Please pass the resolution. Thank you.
Next is Don Ferber. Would you state your address, please?
Yes, my address is 4700 Alice Avenue in Madison. I am an energy activist in the community. I spend a lot of time volunteering with the Sierra Club and 350 Madison, so having done some of that work, I'm bringing some of the information in terms of what I've learned. I want to thank the Sustainability Committee for the work they've done so far. I think you have an excellent resolution before you that has strong standards and brings into play a number of other issues which I think are critical for the city moving forward. So, I commend the committee on the work, and I hope you will pass the resolution. I want to emphasize several things in there. First of all, the importance of energy efficiency, that while renewable energy is a good thing, I think we need to take into full account the lifecycle costs of everything, even renewable energy, while great, is not benign. So, in moving forward, energy efficiency is often the most cost-effective means of moving forward. You're looking at various aspects of growth in this community. I hope you'll consider that, too, in terms of efficiency and public transit. And also, while the building standards are set at the state level, you do have tools that you can use to encourage builders to incorporate more efficiency in the buildings. And I think it's a critical thing to have because these buildings are often around for 50 years or more. So, in moving forward, having that is a critical component, I think, of what you're going to be looking at. I would also, in somewhat in that vein, encourage you to involve the business rest of the energy community. While you may be taking on the city operations first, what's great about your plan is also you're incorporating the entire community, which is a large portion of the energy that's going to be used. And it is very important for citizens and businesses to be involved so they feel like they're part of it. I think some other cities are moving ahead with more just on city action. So, I think what you're doing here is great, and it's very important to do that. I'm glad to see that Middleton has worked with MG&E, will continue to do so. Utility-scale solar is often the cheapest way to go, or wind for that matter. As Bob pointed out, wind is often the cheapest energy now you can get. But MG&E's goals are not up to what some of the communities here are doing, so I think it's great that Middleton is looking to take this action and will move the standards forward here. The other thing I would emphasize is to, you would talk about equity in the plan, I think that's very critical, that everybody benefits from what you're doing here. It's very unfortunate, but back in 2015, a local utility imposed fixed-fee rate hikes that especially impacted those with low energy use, and often that's the low-income members of your community. So, again, I think what you're doing is great, and I urge you to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Reinders.
Hi, my name is John Reinders. I live in Madison, and I work in solar energy development. And I just wanted to say that I support this resolution, I support the work of this committee, and I want to add to all the other things that people have been saying in that beyond helping with our climate mitigation goals and everything else that goes with it, there's also a business case to be made. My business is doing solar energy projects, and in fact, there are a couple that we're underway right now in Middleton, and hopefully more in the future. And so, not only do I feel like you're doing the right thing for the climate and for our children, but I also feel like this is a good thing economically for people, local people like me, and the people actually doing the projects. So, I support this resolution. I support the work of the people that did all the work on it, and I urge you to adopt it. Thank you.
Next is Kendall Cobaring.
Hi, my name is Kendall, and I grew up in Middleton, and I just graduated from UW Madison this May. While I was a student there, I was fortunate to be a part of a student coalition called CLEAN. CLEAN stands for Campus Leaders for Energy Action Now. And CLEAN has dedicated a transitioning University of Wisconsin-Madison to 100% clean energy by 2030. We were very inspired to see the city of Madison make a commitment to clean energy and are just as excited by the prospect of Middleton also taking that important step forward. On behalf of CLEAN, which represents more than eight student organizations on UW Madison campus, as well as 50-plus students, I'd just like to say that I fully support this resolution and Middleton's decision to be part of a brighter future.
Thank you. Next is Kermit Hovey.
My name is Kermit Hovey, and I'm a longtime Middleton resident currently residing at 7018 Hubbard Avenue. On occasion, to help people remember my first name, I will mention, you know, like Kermit the Frog from The Muppets. Additionally, in light of my involvement with climate action such as 2016's Middleton Climate Referendum project, I will say, and I know from personal experience, it's not easy being green. It takes work, effort, perseverance, and patience shared by many people. In the case of the Clean Energy Resolution under consideration today, that includes friends from the community, the members of the Sustainability Committee, city staff, and, I'm hoping, the overwhelming majority of the city council. I hope and trust that today's vote on the resolution and the action following its adoption will continue the hard work and leadership demonstrated by the overwhelming affirmative vote for the two Middleton Climate Referendum questions in 2016. I hope it will also fulfill the mandate extended to the city of Middleton government by that referendum and the overwhelming majority of its citizens to act against climate change. Any and all efforts to, as Citizens Climate Lobby says in one of its taglines, "Build the political will for a livable world," and for that matter, "climate," by setting a direction away from dirty fossil fuels and toward clean energy should be commended and taken. Voting for and acting to fulfill this resolution will do that by example and by impactful action. Bold action to adopt clean energy not only will help protect the climate, but ultimately reduce costs, improve citizens' health, and improve the environment overall. I encourage the council to vote to pass this Clean Energy Resolution today for the sake of Middleton and the greater world today and tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Deb Sager.
Hi, my name is Deb Sager. Address is 105 Island Drive, Madison, Wisconsin, which is still really weird for me to say. I'm a longtime, or was a longtime Middleton resident. I've been on the Sustainability Committee for almost 10 years now, I believe. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the committee to speak in favor of the resolution we've put before you. To keep this short, pretty much what they said is what I would like to say. I think the one point I would like to emphasize is, we talk a lot in the Sustainability Committee about what we as individuals can do to improve the environment, reduce our fossil footprints and so forth. But the reality is, until we make changes at the system level, we will not make a dent in what is happening. You have the opportunity to make a change at the system level by doing this, so I encourage you to approve the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Next is John Heppner. I probably mispronounced that.
Pretty good.
Okay.
My name is John Heppner. I'm actually T-Wall Enterprises Development Manager, and wanted to take this opportunity to kind of introduce what we're doing as a private company in regard to renewable energy. And this picture represents Veritas Village, one of our multifamily developments in downtown Madison where we just installed 704 solar modules. And the reason this is relevant is because we're in the process of installing another roughly 600 solar modules here in Middleton on our Tribeca Village 1 and Tribeca Village 3 multifamily properties. And we plan to install solar arrays on Middleton Center Phase 1 and Middleton Center Phase 2, hopefully by the end of 2019. For those two, the Tribecas will have their solar modules completed hopefully by the end of September. And we're working with John Reinders at Sun Peak. And then I just had a couple of statistics, not statistics, well, I guess statistics for our projects, but these solar arrays are going to decrease our grid electrical use by 65 to 85% for our common area space per building. And once we've installed the Tribecas and then Winger Point, another solar array in Madison, we'll actually be the largest multifamily developer to be incorporating solar and renewable energy in the state of Wisconsin, and we want to continue that initiative and are very supportive of the resolution in front of you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Teresa Radamacher, and I'm here representing the city of Manona. And my friend here from the Sustainability Committee is with me also. And I just want to make it very brief. In the very short time I've been sitting here, I think we've all heard some pretty compelling arguments from a number of perspectives and enterprises and generations, and they're all saying the same thing. And 100% is a really big number, and it's kind of scary. And you say to yourself, "Well, what does it even mean? How are we even going to do it?" But it is the direction that everything is moving. It is the future, and we all know it's the right thing to do. And I urge you to be brave, and your friends in Manona will be brave with you. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have several people that have registered in support of the resolution. Ron Binzel, Sue Dop, Sherry Gruder, Dave Dreyer, Jordan Cobaring. And then we have three people that have actually made comments. Judah Statler, she supports the resolution and am doing everything she can to advance similar resolution in Fitchburg. As a grandmother of four, she wants to leave a livable planet for her grandchildren and all future generations. Global climate change is bad. It's real. It's happening now, and we must act now. Erica Heinig says Middleton should transition to 100% clean energy. This will help our environment and also set an example for other cities. And Rebecca Alwin says Middleton residents have already voted strong support for renewable energy and mitigating climate change by making changes in fuels used and by reducing energy used. I applaud changes the city has already made for more responsible and sustainable energy use. I strongly support Middleton becoming a clean energy city and ask the Common Council to pass the 100% renewable energy resolution. Okay, is there anyone else that wants to speak? Okay, I will close the comments section. And I think what I will do is move up Resolution 201832 to address global warming through clean energy, 100% renewable energy goals.
I'll move approval as recommended by Sustainability. And Heinig?
I will second that.
Any discussion? Joanna?
Thank you all for coming out tonight. It has been a great road and a great path to be on with many of our colleagues in sustainability and other colleagues throughout the community. Today's a really important day. Not only do we have the resolution, which I hope our colleagues will support along with those of us that have sponsored it, but we also have the solar array at the airport. We have B-Cycle. We have really exciting things happening in Middleton, and all of them really driven by the support we know that the community has given us to do more about our climate and about global warming. And so, it's a very exciting day, and I'm happy that Middleton's taking the lead on this. So, I urge all of my colleagues to support it.
Any other discussion? I would like to also make one comment I've noticed for the Sustainability Committee. Driving around the other day, I noticed that QuickTrip is installing solar panels on their roofs, and this is without TIFF support. So, it'd be great if we could recognize these businesses for what they're doing. Okay, then, hearing no more discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Apposed. Okay, the motion of resolution has passed, and thank you, everyone. Okay, the next item is presentation on B-Cycle Bike Sharing System. Morgan Ramaker, Director of Operations for B-Cycle.
Before Morgan comes up, I'll just kind of set this up a little. The conversation about a bike-sharing system in Middleton, it's not new. We've been talking about it for a long time, I think going back as far as eight years. We had discussions with B-Cycle to talk about the possibility of establishing a bike-sharing system here in Middleton. And it was a staff initiative to reinvigorate the discussion with B-Cycle and to get additional information about what it would really take to establish a bike-sharing system in Middleton. So, we've had four departments represented in our meetings with B-Cycle. We've involved our city administrator, Julie Peterman from Tourism, Mark Opitz from Planning, and Matt Amundson from Public Lands has been involved as well. The memo included in the packet had the staff's list of 10 goals for a B-Cycle system ranging from visitor transportation to public health. Some of the topics that staff are particularly enthusiastic about are the opportunities for Smart Bike Systems here on a system in Middleton, and that's where the computer is affixed to the bicycle rather than being on the B-Cycle kiosk where you go to check out a bicycle. Smart bikes have the ability to be docked on conventional bike racks and incorporate a display with trip information and routes, and also ride data on the bicycle. Our staff has developed a concept map showing three phases of bike-sharing infrastructure with the goal that Phase 1 would be geared toward serving Middleton visitors by being clustered near the hotels. Ideally, future phases could be geared toward serving major employment centers, which would open up the possibility for sponsorships from businesses. Staff's recommendation tonight is a referral to seven committees. The memo includes six committees. Public Works was left off the list previously, and Mike and Mark Opitz pointed out this morning that we should probably include Public Works Committee on the list of referrals. The concept that we have talked about is to consider the use of TIFF III funding for the capital costs for the stations in Phase 1. All are within the TIFF district boundary. And that the Tourism Commission could consider using room tax dollars to fund the annual operating costs. So, I'll turn it over to Morgan Ramaker, who's the Executive Director of Madison B-Cycle and the Director of Operations for B-Cycle LLC, and she's going to provide an overview of B-Cycle and is also available to answer questions.
Good evening. I'm Morgan Ramaker with B-Cycle. As Abby mentioned, we've had some really great initial conversations with staff members and are really excited to be here and share some of the things that we're thinking about for bike share in Middleton. So, I wanted to start out just giving a little overview of B-Cycle. So, you probably have heard of us before. We're in the area, and we are part of Trek Bicycle. B-Cycle is a subsidiary of Trek, and we operate Madison B-Cycle as well as a program in Broward County, Florida. We also are the vendor to about 50 bike-share systems across the country. So, we've got a massive network, a lot of expertise that's been developed since 2010 when B-Cycle brought the first large-scale bike-share program to the United States in Denver. So, here's just a little bit of what we're about, really revolutionizing public transportation. A lot of what you see here reflects Trek's goals broadly and in the local community of getting more people on bikes and really believing that that can make a huge difference in their lives in terms of health, in terms of sustainability, economic development, et cetera. So, here's a little view of the network of B-Cycle systems. So, we have launched all these systems since 2010 and continue to grow across the country. So, getting into the fun part, the product. So, Abby gave a nice introduction about Smart Bike technology. So, not to say that our bikes in Madison are dumb, but they're getting a little bit more technology onboard with the latest addition of products. So, you're probably used to seeing the red bikes. As Abby indicated, you go up to a kiosk, you type in your information, it sends a bike out, you're ready to go. With this bike, it's called the B-Cycle Dash, you just walk right up to the bike, you tap the computer to turn it on, and it gives you a wealth of information and options for checking out the bike. It really represents the best-in-class bike-share experience in the market right now, and we have been very excited to launch it in three cities so far this year with another one coming later this month. It's been really exciting to see the reaction people have had to this. The Smart Bike, the biggest advantage that I see as a benefit here in Middleton in particular is the flexibility. So, Abby mentioned that you can dock these two municipal racks if you choose to do it that way. We've seen a combination of things in different cities. In Jackson Hole, Wyoming, they're taking that kind of approach. In Memphis, Tennessee, they're operating it more like we have in Madison where they're forcing people to put them into specific stations. There's also the ability to geofence the stations where it's just an imaginary block around it. So, lots of options. So, lots of options, which makes it pretty exciting. So, here's one of the cool things, a turn-by-turn display of directions. For mostly visitors, this is really valuable. When someone's on a bike, you want to make sure that they're feeling comfortable, that they're alert, that they're paying attention, and this takes it away from trying to hold your phone and look at it when you're trying to figure out where you're going. So, we see this really as a nice safety feature and also something to get people to the destinations you want them going to when they're visiting your city. Lockup anywhere. So, it's got this U-lock that you see on the bike that allows it to attach to anything. We really believe that that attaching to something is the way to go to make sure that you have a nice, clean, organized right-of-way, but also offering a little bit of flexibility compared to the very large, very expensive docks and stations of our traditional system. So, this is just a little bit of a view of what that looks like when you have a bike locked. I'll show a little bit more about some of the different options for checking out a bike, but it works with RFID technology, has GPS on board that allows you to see where you've gone, how far you've gone, all of that kind of thing. If you can go back one more. There we go. So, these are the different checkout options. We have an awesome app that allows you to just check it out without touching anything on the bike. You just work right from your phone. You can use an RFID card like we talked about and like we use in Madison, too. Or you can use this payment kiosk that allows people to purchase one of those RFID cards right on site. So, we talked about the flexible configuration. Here are a few options that you see. So, on the left, you've got kind of your more typical station. You can also set up a rack or a geofence that doesn't have that kiosk, just allows people to go right to the bikes to check it out. And as I mentioned, our app is really user-friendly. It's a great option for people who are using this regularly. You don't have to remember a card or anything else. You just have your phone in your pocket and allows you access to the bikes. So, I wanted to share a little bit about what ridership looks like in some of our systems. And I'll talk mostly about Madison because it's right in our backyard, and I'm very involved in the program. So, one of the things I, that has come up in our staff discussions is who are the riders? Who is this serving, all of that? So, I look at it in two different ways. So, the first bar you see is a breakout of trips by members and what we call casual riders. So, a member is somebody who has an ongoing monthly or annual pass, and then those casual riders, it's someone who comes and buys a day pass, buys a week or a weekend pass. So, what you'll see here is those members, which is mostly locals, make up the majority of trips, but the majority of revenue comes from those visitors. So, it's really important to have that nice mix of both. We really want to see a lot of trips because you're your best advertising, right? The more people see the bikes out there, the more it's something they'll consider doing. But the revenue is very important, too. In terms of demographics, this is just a quick snap view of what we see mostly. So, just call out a couple of interesting things here. We have a pretty heavily female ridership, which is unique in cycling, and you'll probably want to just note here that UW-Madison affects our, our stats quite a bit, so just keep that in mind. We'll go to the next one. So, why people ride, this is really fascinating to me. We see a wide variety. At the top, we see people running errands. That speaks to the fact that most of our trips in Madison come from locals, but a lot of people are using it for social, for entertainment, for visiting local businesses, et cetera. And this quote was something that one of our riders mentioned that I just love of what it means to people who are visiting a city when they see Bike Share is there and what opportunities that opens up for them. So, one thing I wanted to talk a little bit about, in addition to user revenue, like we saw from those day pass riders, et cetera, is you have some opportunity for advertising and marketing, both for the city and for local businesses, and this can be a good revenue option. So, three different things really to think about here. On the bottom left, we've got our app. So, there is in-app opportunity to show us sponsorship. So, in Madison, we've got our friends at Trek. The middle picture is one of our new systems. So, this is Memphis, Tennessee's Explore Bike Share, and they've done a phenomenal job with the bike assets. So, you can see there, one of those bikes is a Blue Cross Blue Shield-sponsored bike, another is a local tourism blog, and there's just really cool things that you can do to get the word out. It's a fun way for people to find a new venue for their advertising. And then finally, sponsored stations. So, the one you see there is from UW Health in Madison, and we have a few like that. And with that sponsored station, we typically offer employee discounts with it as well. So, finally, just want to talk a little bit about our program in Madison and how it works. So, if you go ahead to the next one, you'll see this is my team in Madison, and basically, this team is devoted to making sure that we have a great system that is always on, always working well, looking clean, working nicely, making for a great rider experience. So, we're a small and mighty team focused on operations, the folks that you see out moving bikes from one place to another to make sure they're in the right places when people need them and to make sure they're in great working order. So, that's one of the great advantages of Bike Share. Even if you have your own bike, you do not have to worry about the tires being flat. You do not have to worry about any chain issues. It is always ready to go, always in safe operating condition. And then we have a small business team that works on advertising, sponsorship, et cetera. And this is just a little bit of a peek at the tools that we use to make sure that the system is operating really well. So, we've got a map there. It's all green. That means all the stations are in, the right condition, has the number of bikes that's appropriate for the station size, and we're constantly monitoring this information, basically just about 24/7, to make sure the Bike Share program is ready for people whenever. So, that's what I've got for you guys tonight. Love to answer any questions that you might have. Thanks for your time.
Any questions from Morgan?
How do you handle the, obviously, when you parked at a specific station that you could charge things if you needed to, with the kind of virtual fencing or whatever you called it, you must have to physically go to where the bike is to somehow make sure it's recharged or whatever?
That's exactly right. It's manual battery swap. So, on each bike, there's a solar panel that powers some of it, and then it's got a backup battery supply to keep that heads-up display working. And so, that's part of what the team does when they're checking tires, checking all of that, they're swapping batteries. Yeah. Same goes for the kiosk as well. Yeah.
Thank you. And I will move up on the agenda for miscellaneous, item number four. Concept for B-Cycle Bike Sharing System and Recommendation for Referrals to Committees?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, excuse me, Acting Mayor?
Yes.
One thing that I'd like to note, we didn't talk about costs for this, but they're, of course, our costs, and we'll be developing that a bit further with Morgan and her team. But we know that the annual operating cost, at least for this first iteration, is around $110,000, $120,000. So, it is a significant investment. The capital costs could conceivably be put in place based on our goals and our TID plan through tax increment financing, but those are also fairly significant. I don't remember the dollar amount off the top of my head. So, one of the, the things in referring it to Tourism Commission is to consider the use of their revenues and reserves for operating costs for, for this kind of a system as a partnership. At least in getting this started, the capital can be TIF, and as Morgan said, there's opportunities as well for sponsors at various stations around the community. So, that's something we can work further on because tax increment financing, of course, is also limited. But I just wanted to make you aware of that, and we'll be putting together some figures and memos so that when those committees talk about this, they're not talking about it on a vacuum.
Emily?
Can you speak to Madison's experience after three to five years in the program? Is it sort of a wash in their annual operating? Because I can understand having that initial investment, but as users are paying their monthly fees and outside ridership, is it kind of a wash or there's a little bit difference, but it's a worthy cause?
Yeah, it's an interesting one. Bike Share is, it has significant operating costs each year, and we're always working on bringing those down. But it, like other forms of transportation, it's not 100% rate of recouping your costs through ridership revenue. So, those sponsorships are really key for that. It does not come out as a wash, but we rely on those sponsorships. And for Madison in particular, we're a little interested that we're, we're owned by Trek, but we think about that amount from Trek as sort of their sponsorship. So, their name is on all of the bikes, and that's what you see in other cities as a title sponsor and things like that that help offset those costs. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. No, we have a motion. So, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Morgan. Now, we will go to the consent agenda. There are four items, common council meeting minutes, audit of the bills, claim filed by Karen Epstein for damages from a fall on a city sidewalk on November 8th, and claim from Country Financial for damages to their insured Cory and Shawna Mace from a city tree that fell on May 21st.
I think I would make a motion to split out items number three and four, the claims by two individuals.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on those two items, minutes and audit of the bills? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that part of the consent agenda is approved. Next item would be claim filed by Karen Epstein for damages from a fall on a city sidewalk on November 8th.
I would make a motion that we deny the claim for the fall on a city sidewalk.
Okay.
Any discussion?
I don't doubt that people, you know, can get hurt, and, and I don't doubt that, you know, Ms. Karen Epstein was injured, but people can have accidents any day of the week. And as I read through the, the background behind this, I, I just did not see anything where the city is either liable for it or the city was at fault in any way, shape, or form. So, that would be why I would recommend against, or yeah, recommend denying this claim.
Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, the claim is denied. Number four, claim from Country Financial for damages to their insured Cory and Shawna Mace from a city tree that fell on May 21st, 2018.
Again, I would recommend denial of this claim.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Again, just for the record or for anybody who might be interested in the audience, this is a case where a, a tree fell and damaged a house. The tree did have some, a, a couple of minor problems with the tree, but that was not the cause of it falling. The, the problem with the tree was it got rained on a lot, and that happened to every tree in the area, and there was nothing caused by the, the known factors of this tree to, to cause it to fall over and hit the house. And again, just the facts of the case are such that I would recommend the denial.
And all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, the claim has been denied. Next item is under agreements, Stormwater Management System Maintenance Agreement with Stardust Investments LLC Goodwill Industries, 68 20th Century Avenue.
Move approval is recommended by Public Works Staff.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Agreement is approved. Next item, memorandum of agreement with Middleton Cross Plains School District for sharing of public recreational facilities.
Move approval as recommended by Finance.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Agreement with the school district is approved. Development agreement with Nicky and Hana LLC, Hamid Nagani Project for Tax Incremental District, number three, assistance for a mixed-use three-story building, 1908 Parmenter Street.
Move approval is recommended by Finance Committee.
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, there were a couple of corrections that I thought could be made. Mostly, I think, just typos more than anything else, and let's see if I can quickly find them on my copy.
The, the amounts of the assistance all have stray periods where there should be commas, for example, but there are also, for the amount of assistance, there are also some blanks in the agreement.
Sure. Actually, page 53, I had a question of what it's supposed to be. In section 3.2, it says, first sentence, commencing on February 15th, 2020, and on each February 15th and September 1st. And other places in the agreement, it seemed like it was, they were sticking with the 15th, middle of the month, so February 15th, middle of February, and then six months later, I think, February 15th. So, I'm just wondering if there was a missing five after that one, or if it was intended to be every September 1st going forward. It's, it's a difference of two weeks, but I don't know if it matters.
It would be illogical if one was the 15th and the other was the 1st. I'm, I'm guessing the intention was that it be September 15th.
I agree with you.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, if that would be fixed, that would be great, and I believe I had another comment on page 72. And this one really is just a silly typo, but in the second paragraph, it says, "The principal amount of this bond shall be a principal amount of $348,080." I believe it's supposed to be $84, so I would strike the TY. Definitely minor typos, but I would fix that one.
It's why you're an engineer.
Yeah. Might be slightly anal retentive, yes.
So, that would be the only changes I would request.
The motion would be to approve with final changes by city attorney.
At least that one does show September 15th.
Good. Excellent.
Okay, thank you, Robert, for excellent proofreading. Any further discussion?
Larry, excuse me, Larry, the, there was a draft sent to the office today. Did that incorporate these changes that Robert mentioned, or?
Did not.
Did not?
I didn't reach out in advance. I'm bringing them to everybody's attention now in public.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The agreement is approved. Next is a land lease and solar easement with One Energy Development, Middleton Municipal Airport, 8300 Airport Road.
Move approval is recommended by both the Airport Commission and the Finance Committee.
Second.
Discussion?
Everybody have a chance to look at the specifics about this particular project?
Exciting.
Yeah, very exciting.
Exciting opportunity, generating a lot of electricity, in addition to lodging planes.
Nice.
It's a good first step towards a resolution.
It is.
Five megawatts.
Five megawatts.
The largest project in the state.
Okay.
For at least a while.
It's our next project.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The land lease and solar easement is approved. Agreement with KL Engineering for Design Services for Northeast Middleton Connector Path.
Move approval as recommended by Finance.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? So, the agreement is passed. Next item are licenses, and I think item one, the application to amend the Class A license premise description by Roundy Supermarket. Doing business is pick and save, 6800 Century Avenue to include the designated clickless parking stalls needs to be deferred. So, item two is...
We, I think we need to make a motion.
We need a motion.
And I, I would make that motion to defer.
Okay.
To why?
Because we don't have enough people that can... Because we don't have enough people that can vote on it legally.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right.
I will second that.
Okay. Dan has to recuse himself.
Question though, Larry?
Yeah, I thought a quorum, that abstention doesn't factor into a quorum.
The quorum of the council, and this is a strange rule, I just discovered it, the quorum of the council has to be present and voting on every single item on the agenda. So, if you have a bare quorum and a member abstains, that means that you no longer have a quorum on the council.
Under Wisconsin law, correct?
Under Wisconsin law.
Not under Robert's rules.
Not anywhere, not any other normal country.
As I said, it's a very strange rule, but that is, that is the rule based on Supreme Court precedent, so.
Okay.
Another question, Larry. Since Dan Ramsey is abstaining from voting on the issue item, can he vote to defer?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know if that was, if that followed necessarily.
Well, if he feels comfortable voting, if he doesn't, then he can't, and we have no quorum.
So, we don't do anything?
Well, I don't know whether he wants to abstain on moving to defer.
I think I can vote to defer.
Okay.
Okay.
Then we have a quorum.
Okay.
So, all in favor of deferring this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Item one is deferred. Item two, under licenses, is application to amend the agent for the alcohol beverage license held by Ultimate Mart LLC, DBA Pick 'n Save, 6800 Century Avenue, to appoint Ann Dimbowski as agent.
I'll move approval.
I would second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. So, Ann Dimbowski is appointed as the licensed agent. Next is miscellaneous, Appeal for Payment Assistance of Water and Sewer Utility Bill, Paul Lagan, 3532 Valley Ridge Road.
I'll move deferral as recommended by Finance.
Second that.
Discussion?
Just a question, I wasn't here for that part of Finance.
Larry said that we have other vehicles that we should be looking at, and this vehicle is not an appropriate one.
Okay, all in favor of deferral, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we have approved deferral. Next item, Middleton Water Utility 2018 Simplified Rate Case, WU 185.
Move approval is recommended by Public Works and Finance.
I will second that motion.
Okay, discussion?
Could, I read through this. Is there anybody who can help me understand a little bit better what I've read? Thank you.
As you may recall, our last full rate case for the water utility was in 2015. Once we pass a full rate case, we have a five-year window to look at a simplified rate case, which is a much simpler process focused on making sure that our rate of return is an appropriate window for the water utility. We're at year three of that five-year window, so we do take a look at it every year on that simplified case, and we plan to do that for the next two years, and then bring it back to both the Public Works Committee and the Common Council to see if another rate case would be appropriate in two years.
Okay.
Does that help to answer?
That certainly does. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The rate case is approved. Request for Proposals for Pleasant View Golf Course Impact Study and Design, Recommendations from Pleasant View Road Reconstruction Project.
I will recommend approval for the recommendation of PVGC, and I believe also Finance.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion is approved. Direction Regarding Procurement of Audit Services for 2018 and Future Years.
Move approval as recommended by Finance to go for an RFP.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Memorandum of Understanding Between the City and Middleton Professional Police Officers Association for K-9 Programs.
Move approval as recommended by Personnel and Finance.
I will second that.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We have a police dog.
Yay! I think Neighbor would be a good name.
Oh!
That would be a good name.
What was it?
Neighbor.
Neighbor.
Then it could be a good neighbor.
Then we can't do the fundraising to get a name.
I wanted to add that part. I told my children about the need for fundraising, so they emptied their piggy banks for you.
Oh, nice!
Oh!
I usually don't like taking cash in envelopes, but I'll make them. Thank you, thank your children.
Oh, that's awesome!
Wow. Great job.
Thank you, Emily.
We witnessed it, yeah.
Thank your children.
Any witnesses?
It's a sealed envelope. Put some crayon marks on it. Thank you.
Those are the best guidance.
Okay, next item is under ordinances, first reading, and we can take final action if there's a motion to suspend rules.
Let me ask first, have we, have we published a notice of intent to circulate yet? If we would, if we had not, I would, I would think this would be viewed as a, an introduction of this, of this ordinance?
Nobody here knows that we have, so let's, let's, let's take it that way as an introduction only. And then, you would recommend, Larry, bringing it back only after we have done the appropriate public notice?
Yes, it's just a single publication.
And you'll draft that for us too, right?
I think I already have, but if I haven't, I will.
To whom did you send it? Do you recall?
I don't recall.
Okay. And then, on the ordinance itself, before Robert points it out, Springfield is spelled incorrectly. We need, we need a G in there.
Oh, God.
In the heading, that is.
It's good that we are introducing it then.
So, do we need to defer this?
No, we can move approval for the first reading, right? Is that what you're saying?
No, we're not, we're not doing anything because we haven't had the...
So, we're just?
Moving on.
Moving on. Okay.
Okay.
We don't need to defer?
No.
Okay. Then, under Planning Zoning, Request by Ellison Construction for Tax Increment District Number Three Assistance, Whispering Pines Condominiums, Pleasant View Road.
I'll recommend approval as recommended by Finance.
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The request for TIF financing or TIF assistance is approved. Resolutions, Resolution 201830, Approving the Issuance of a TIF Revenue Bond for Market West Apartments Project.
A move approval as recommended by Finance with the date changed to 2018 for the first payment.
Now who's reading all the details?
I remembered, Bill told me.
Okay, just, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we've approved the TIF revenue bond, Mike?
Michelle noticed that you didn't actually vote on the first reading on the ordinance.
Larry said we didn't need to.
Yeah, had to move on.
Oh, it's okay just to introduce it without...
Well, if you want to defer action so it's not even a first reading, I think you could do that.
Okay.
Do you want to do that?
It doesn't matter to me, whatever the city attorney says, you know?
I'll move deferral just so we have some kind of resolution, we know it has to come back.
We need a second.
I will second that deferral.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we have deferred it. We've already approved global warming. Next...
No!
Not of it.
We have not approved global warming.
That's true.
We approved battle heat.
We have approved Resolution 201832.
Thank you.
Okay, yes. Next item is committee appointments. First one is the PRFC Recommendation to the Stormwater Utility Board, and that is James Koch.
J-O-C-H, I think he pronounces it Cook.
Cook.
Oh, okay, Cook.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. And the next one is the Finance Committee Recommended Representative, which is Mark Sullivan, to the Stormwater Utility Board.
I will make a motion to approve Mark Sullivan.
I will second that.
Discussion?
My only discussion is, does Mark know that we're nominating him to this?
He has been on it since the beginning.
Okay, so, not a huge stretch.
No.
Okay, thank you.
It's a renewal.
Okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item is to convene into closed session pursuant to Sections 19.851E, Wisconsin Statutes E, for the deliberation of or negotiation for the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specific business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The Common Council will consider a jurisdictional offer for the property at the northwest corner of Parmenter Street and University Avenue in Middleton for an intersection widening project.
I'll move approval, or move that we go into closed session.
I will second that motion.
And I'm going to ask that we be really official, and we raise our hands for approval.
I move we go, oh, okay.
To go into closed session.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Yes.
We'd make a motion that we direct the city attorney to make a jurisdictional offer on the property at the northwest corner of Parmenter Street and University Avenue.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we have made a motion to direct the attorney.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. We're adjourned.